Well, good evening and welcome to the December 14th meetings of the City of Salem Urban Renewal Agency and City Council. I'm going to call the Urban Renewal Agency to order, and if the recorder would please call the roll.
Yes, Counselor Stapleton?
Here.
Board Member Anderson?
Present.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Leung? Board Member Osik? Board Member Hoy?
Here.
Board Member Nordike?
Season's greetings.
Board Member Lewis?
Here.
Chair Bennett?
Here.
Hey, Counselor Lewis, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy, any additions or deletions?
No.
Thank you. The consent, oh, I don't show any public comment on this. So we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Quick hello, this is Counselor Leung, so you know, I just got on.
Oh, great. Hi.
I move approval-
I also joined this map.
Osik is here as well. Okay. There we go, I'm sorry.
All right. Third time's a charm.
Yeah.
I move approval of the consent counter.
Second.
Second by Lewis.
And tonight, all we have are the November 9, 2020 draft Urban Renewal Agency minutes.
Discussion. The recorder would please call the roll.
Board Member Leung?
Here.
Need your vote.
Yay.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Nanki? Board Member Osik?
Aye.
Board Member Hoy?
Aye.
Board Member Nordike?
Aye.
Board Member Lewis?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye. Okay, the motion passes. We have no resolution, action items, or public hearings, or special orders. Just go to information reports. Rutherford, are you?
Yes, Kristen Rutherford, Urban Development Director, and I'll just speak very quickly to a couple of items here. The information report that has the purchases approved administratively through September 30th includes appraisal services, right away services for McGill Crest. So we are moving forward with appraisal and property acquisition for that project. We don't have full funding for construction yet, and we'll continue to seek federal funding for that, but we are moving forward to keep the project going as much as we can until we have the money to construct it. And then on the other six B, the second purchase item, we may note that we have an item there for environmental remediation for the Safron property. This is on the block that is next to the Union Gospel Mission, which we're also acquiring. There was prior contamination there. We did a back from those transactions when we were purchasing them to pay for this environmental remediation, so we can prepare that block for redevelopment. And that's it.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the McGill Crest, I'll put in my usual plug for bike pass there and separated from the road, not just striped on the road. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much, and I don't see any further business, so we're adjourned. I'm going to call this meeting of the City Council to order. Recorder would please call the roll.
Yes, Counselor Stapleton?
Here.
Counselor Anderson?
Likewise.
Counselor Nanki?
Here, for the last time.
Counselor Leung?
Here.
Counselor Osik?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike? Counselor Nordike?
Just texted me telling me she got kicked off, and she'll try to get back in.
Okay. Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Here. Okay. Counselor Hoy, any additions or deletions?
No.
Oh, then to Council City Manager comments, anyone wanting, yes, Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to let everybody know that out of the blue, last Tuesday, I developed idiopathic Bell's palsy. Idiopathic means that the cause is unknown, and the Bell's palsy means it's a disturbance to my facial nerve. The nerve controls blinking in your lips and your tongue and other areas of, in my case, the left side of my face. It doesn't impact anything else. My brain, my motor functions, all those things are working just fine and unimpacted, but my face isn't working right. I wanted to talk about this. One moment. I wanted to talk about this so people can understand what I'm experiencing. It's most obvious, the most obvious thing you'll probably observe is that my cadence and the character of my speech are impacted. It makes getting the words out, to get out of my mouth, a lot more difficult because my lips don't work quite right. And I also wanted to raise a little bit of awareness about disorder, this disorder. Many people have never heard, about 40,000 people in the United States are diagnosed with Bell's palsy in the United States every year. The good news is, is that the vast majority of cases resolve themselves within about six months on their own. Since speaking is very difficult currently, I'm going to be limiting my spoken words as much as possible, but I just wanted to let everybody know why, what's going on when you see me looking kind of goofier than normal and sounding not so great. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. We really wish you a very speedy recovery. Six months sounds like a long time. I hope-
Some people recover in a matter of days, and that's-
We hope.
Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else? Yes, Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and yes, definitely for a speedy recovery. Hopefully, it's days, Chris. Knowing you are fully functional or otherwise, yeah, it's gotta be annoying more than anything. But, yeah, I was unaware of that malady, and so thanks for letting us know on that. On a side note, this is my last meeting-
Oh.
-after 20 years. And so I just wanted to make a couple of comments on the upfront. I'll be registering a no vote later in the meeting. Hopefully, it's my last no vote, unless Counselor Hoy moves to extend meeting time. But just wanted to pass on how wonderful an experience this has been. The education on how our city works has been phenomenal, and I've made a lot of friends, but I've also isolated myself to a large extent to not show preference to a group as well, and that's been hard for 20 years. So, looking forward to making contact with some of the people, you know, that I've interacted with over the last 20 years and moving them from an acquaintance to a friend. That being said, wanted to just encourage, you know, counselors, both current and future, to remember, you know, as a counselor, you not only represent your ward, you represent the entire city, but you also represent the individual, and that's a tough one. And as long as someone isn't harming someone else, you know, our founders said they should be able, free to do whatever they want to do. And so, just keep that in mind, and keep in mind that our meetings used to go for a long time into the evening, and we put the Rules Committee together to kind of limit some of that conversation that we used to have at the front end of the meeting. And when we pull items now, because that was the resolution to that, if you want to talk about it, you got to pull it. Be mindful of not only the individuals that are in the audience once you get back into chambers, but even here still, if there's land use issues on the agenda, there's attorneys that are sitting in on the meeting, they're costing their clients a lot of money. But we also cost our city staff time as well. When we pull something, to just make a comment on how great it is, that staff person has to sit there for potentially several hours, just in case there's a question that comes up that has a need for a response from staff. So, again, it's been a pleasure. Looking forward to staying engaged. We had our Morningside Neighborhood Meeting the other night. They were in need of a secretary. I offered to serve in that role as we transition into the New Year as well. So I think you'll be hearing from me in that regards as well. Again, it all comes back to local. So, thank you, and best of luck in dealing with some of these really tough issues as you move into the New Year, and happy Christmas and happy holidays.
Thank you, Brad. You will be missed a great deal, having spent just on the council side 13 years with you, and before that, for five or seven more. It's been a genuine delight to work with you. So, I'm glad to hear you're going to be continuing to stay engaged. Your experience is a tremendous value to the city. So, thank you very much. Tom?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a bunch of short things, starting off with wishing Counselor Hoy a quick and speedy recovery, and then also thanking Counselor Nanki and Counselor Osik for their service on this board. And they both were valuable contributors over the years, and I appreciate their service. We have had diversity, equity, and inclusion training as part of the council, two trainings with Dr. Johnny Lake, that have council and as well as city staff, and they've been very, very helpful and important. I would urge, a couple times, people weren't able, of the council weren't able to attend full meetings or for various reasons, and I would hope that there was some sort of taping of the presentation, and that the counselors or the people on the council who couldn't come would show up and listen to that. And I spoke with Gretchen Bennett today, and there may be a third session because we kind of got rushed on the second session, lots to discuss. So I hope there is, and I appreciate the work done by the staff, and I think it's very, very valuable training for everybody on the City Council to be there. Ben, I want to also just speak briefly about what I often speak about, which is pedestrians who are killed by cars. And we've had a big loss to the community recently, and Selma Pierce, who as well was a very, very engaged member of our community, and she will be missed. And she was on Doakes Ferry Road earlier this month, and a car, a driver of a car hit her, and the speed limit on Doakes Ferry is 40 miles an hour. And as I've said before in the past, if you're a pedestrian and you're hit by a car that's going 40 miles an hour, it's over for you. So I again think we ought to look at the speed limit on many of these roads, and my sympathies go out to Dr. Bud Pierce and their family for what happened. And Selma Pierce is a very well-known member of this community, but many of the other people who have died are not so well-known, but their lives were just as valuable. So I really think we ought to do all we can to ensure that this doesn't happen. Finally, I note that on January 1st, we're having some sort of rally on the state Capitol by the same sort of people who don't understand that the election is over. It was over today. I suspect we'll have some people speaking on that in the public, and I really think we need to be vigilant about what happens there, especially as we, as both Counselor Nordike and I discussed last meeting, alcohol in the parks is something that has nothing to do with the First Amendment or the Second Amendment, and we ought to look at that. So thank you, and happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nordike?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to wish season's greetings to one and all, and happy Hanukkah to all my friends who are celebrating tonight. I want to thank our outgoing counselors for their service, and I join in the remarks to recognize the incredible community service of Selma Pierce. Our prayers and thoughts are with you, family, with her family, excuse me. I also want to comment on the protests because it has been the number one subject from my ward and my residence. As we all know, we've seen multiple protests leading through neighborhoods now to the governor's mansion. There is no indication that these protesters are interested in a civil discussion of the issues. Now, I'm confident that when they arrive at the governor's gates, that the governor is not there, and that her security detail makes sure, that makes sure that she's nowhere near that residence. And so when a group of protesters rally outside her gate, she can't hear you because she won't be there. And there's nothing about four-letter words that changes anyone's minds. But you know who can hear you, however, are the boys and girls who call this neighborhood home. It's the children and their families who are not responsible for the governor's executive orders. They are not responsible for the outcome of the presidential election. They are not responsible for shutdowns impacting our businesses. Unfortunately, we see innocent people caught in the crossfire through no fault of their own. Our neighborhoods should be places of peace, where people can raise their families or retire with grace and tranquility. But we face a lot of challenges because the road leading to the governor's house is a public road, and the sidewalks leading to the governor's house is a public sidewalk. And the reality is, is that all the rude and crude and forward little words they say are not illegal unless there is an actionable threat of violence, that marching down the sidewalks is not illegal, and even open carry firearms is perfectly legal. But my neighbors nonetheless have a message for our police department, and they want our department to enforce the laws on the books. They don't want the protesters to walk all over you, our men, women, and law enforcement, and flout our laws with impunity. Now, I do not envy the officer who has to approach a group of drunken and belligerent bigots holding guns to tell them to march on a sidewalk, to tell them to pour out their beer. I do not envy them, and I appreciate the courage of the officers who have issued citations to lawbreakers. Our community doesn't want our officers to needlessly put themselves in harm's way. I think we all want our officers to use the tools available to carefully assess the situation, to de-escalate tension, to prevent violence, to minimize the chances of going viral and enticing even more lawbreakers to descend upon our city, to terrorize our neighborhoods. Our officers are charged with keeping our neighborhoods safe, and we all expect them to do so. I appreciate and thank our police who have taken the courageous step of handing out citations. But I want to reiterate, just as my neighbors are reiterating to me, that they want the laws on the books to be enforced. They want the laws to be equally applied to everyone, regardless of political persuasion, regardless of the colors of one skin, regardless of your personal creed. So I recognize the challenges here, and that's why I'm trying to lay them out for you, for my residents, for my fellow residents of Salem. And I've asked the city manager and our police chief to make Salem Police Department officials available to residents who are impacted by these neighborhood protests, so that our law enforcement can listen and answer questions, and help explain all of the challenges that come in the crossroads of public safety and freedom of speech. And I will continue working with our city. I hear you, and I see you, and I understand that hate is not welcome here, white supremacy is not welcome here, and I am doing everything I can, and I will continue to do so. So please, keep your emails coming. And if you have concerns and are dissatisfied with how our law enforcement are handling protests, we have a performance audit underway, and you can go to the city's website and make your voice heard by contacting the performance auditors with any concerns that you do have. Just Google "City of Salem Performance Audit," share your story to find the page to share your story. We have a process to arrive at objective and best practices for handling protests. So thank you, and please keep your input coming. I sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I finished my sixth year on the Salem City Council, I've been negligent in not responding to the numerous times that Counselor Anderson has talked about the unfortunate deaths of pedestrians in the city of Salem. But I believe it's time now to mention some of the other victims in those circumstances, and those are the people through no fault of their own, are the ones that had, happened to hit the individual pedestrians. In many cases, no citation is issued. Imagine if you could for a moment how you would feel if through no fault of your own, you struck and killed Selma Pierce. Imagine the pain and suffering that you would have to live with for the rest of your life. I believe that that is worth mentioning tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? I wanted, I've got a couple of things. I had the honor and really the joy of lighting the first candle on the menorah down on the corner of Trade and Commercial, Ferry and Commercial, whichever one it is, down at the corner of the large city hall block. This is a project that we've had in conjunction over the years with the local Jewish community, and I'm really proud that this continues and was pleased to be asked again. This is one of the many times I've had a chance to do this. So I really wish our Jewish community all the happiness and joy that comes during this really important season. I also want to thank the Greater Salem Filipino-American Association. Their president, Al Baromio, met with me last week and presented a $500 check to the Salem Library Foundation in memory of library supporter, all-around fantastic person, Selma Pierce, and was greatly appreciated. I was joined by the city librarian and very, very pleased. I think it was just a really, really wonderful tribute to Selma, and one of the many, many, many organizations she and Dr. Pierce have supported in this community. So, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I know Housing Authority Commission Chair Hoy would have spoken or added to this first item that I have to share with you, and that is, yesterday there was a fire at the Salem Housing Authority's Robert Lindsay Tower. One apartment caught fire. That resident is hospitalized, so please have her in our thoughts. And there was a need to evacuate 13 residents because of water damage. We understand this event comes as a shock to many, certainly during the holiday season, and especially challenging during a pandemic. Our goal is to ensure the residents can return to their homes as soon as possible. There were three floors in the basement that suffered water damage, in addition to the apartment that was badly burned. The cause of the fire is under investigation. The 13 residents are being sheltered at area hotels or with family, with the assistance of the Red Cross. So if you're considering donations at this time of year, please consider the Red Cross. We are hopeful that four or five of the residents will be able to go home tomorrow. Also, yesterday, there was a COVID outbreak at our Redwoods Crossing Salem Housing Authority residential complex. Marion County Public Health is taking the lead. All staff, contractors, residents will be tested. Anyone who tests positive and isn't able to quarantine, so we do have some shared restrooms in the building, in that building. Those who can't quarantine at Redwood Crossings will be part of a hotel program to provide the isolated quarantine. So the pandemic has hit our Salem Housing Authority. Also, yesterday, it was not a peaceful Sunday. At Cascade's Gateway, there was a propane fire that was enlarged by several paint cans that exploded. The area damage was about 1,600 square feet. No one was hurt. No significant trees were damaged. I understand that allowing the use of the parks to provide social distancing as recommended by public health authorities has become unsustainable without change. Tonight's agenda is a recommendation to consider extending the emergency declaration. Within 30 days, I will be bringing a plan to council to end camping in the parks. The plan will include how to end the program safely. So I want to emphasize that it's not to end within 30 days, it's to bring you a plan for consideration. In the meantime, the city, with help from nonprofit agencies, is already in the parks requesting that individuals move to existing shelters. We continue to have space challenges. However, there are beds available, and we're encouraging people who are using the parks to voluntarily leave, and we will clean, we will continue with the cleanup and the monitoring of the two parks. Since we won't be together until after the first, we won't be together again until January 11th. As has been mentioned, the state Capitol, we are the location for people to exercise their rights of free speech and assembly, be heard by those elected to serve, the legislature, the governor. We take that responsibility and public safety seriously, regardless of the content of the speech or the ideology of the groups. Hate has no place in Salem, as far as I'm concerned. There has been an announced march for January 1st, and there will likely be continued demonstrations at the Capitol, at the Capitol Mall, Capitol steps. The language directed at Governor Kate Brown in between demonstrators, no matter how personally offensive, is not a legal basis to stop the marches. The city will continue to monitor these events, and consistent with our primary interest in preserving public safety, will take appropriate action as is warranted under the circumstances. I want to thank and give my best wishes to Counselor Nanki and Counselor Osik in their post-council journey, and I wish you all happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on then to proclamations. I want to, I do a proclamation, and it says I will canvass the votes. I'll resist the temptation to announce all the vote totals, but whereas the general election was held on the third day of November 2020, at which candidates for certain offices were voted upon, and whereas the results of the election have been recorded in the minute record of the council, now therefore I, Chuck Bennett, Mayor of the City of Salem, Oregon, proclaim and declare that at said election, Chuck Bennett was duly elected mayor, Virginia Stapleton was duly elected counselor in Ward 1, Trevor Phillips was duly elected counselor in Ward 3, Jose Gonzalez was duly elected counselor in Ward 5, and Vanessa Nordike was duly elected counselor in Ward 7. Signed, this 14th day of December. So congratulations all. So congratulations all. Now, let's see where we are next. Just one second here. I got so excited doing that proclamation, I lost my agenda. Here we go. Okay, it's time for public comment. This is on agenda items only at this point, at this point.
I should, I believe?
I'm sorry?
I believe we have a presentation?
Oops, I'm sorry.
Public, the Public Art Commission?
Oh, I am sorry, yeah, the Public Arts Commission. Who's going to represent the Public Arts Commission?
Chris Darcy, the chair, is on. Just a moment.
I am Chris Darcy. I'm expecting to be assisted by Heather Dimkey, who has the slides for our presentation tonight. Is Heather on the, this, the call? Well, without her, I'm happy to go ahead.
Here we go.
Perfect, perfect. Once again, I'm Chris Darcy, Chair of the Salem Public Art Commission. I live in the Fairmount neighborhood in Ward 7. So Heather, let's go to the next slide. Just a reminder for people that the Salem Public Art Commission was established by the city in 2010, so we've had 10 years of really planning. I think the last year has been evidence of the city's one-half of 1% requirement kicking in. We have seven commissioners, ranging from architects, designers, practicing artists, educators, and we are governed by the Salem Revised Code. Let's go to the next slide. We know that art enriches us in a city that is as diverse as Salem is. Culture is a way that brings people together, that helps us better understand each other, and we think that we have, we're beginning to help improve the public spaces that we all share. The piece that's pictured is the piece that the city and the Oregon Environmental Council jointly commissioned to celebrate the anniversary of the recycling bill, the bottle bill. Let's go to the next slide. Our responsibilities are really recommending and helping to acquire work for city facilities, stewarding the collection, making sure that people, or that the pieces are maintained, helping the people, the people of Salem better understand what the work is all about, and then managing the public art fund. Let's go to the next slide. You and we own nearly 100 pieces of art. We have the collection appraised. It's valued at about, you know, $1,003,000, and these are both indoor and outdoor pieces. Next slide. What I'm really excited about is reporting on two of the projects that are underway right now. So as you know, you, we, the voters, helped approve the construction of a wonderful new and much-needed police station. The half percent for art kicked in with that project, and we put out, as you might know, a public RFQ, seeking qualifications from artists who are qualified in public art practices and who were interested in doing a work for Salem. We had a wonderful discovery process, had a number of finalists for the project, and ultimately selected an artist named Blessing Hancock, who designed and fabricated a work called Equitas that is cited outside the new station. I think, and our, my fellow commissioners believe that the public engagement in public art is critical for success. So Blessing Hancock put out a call to the Salem community for words and phrases reflective of the police, their vision, their values, their way of doing business, and about 1,000 responses came in through several public hearings. At the art fair one summer, at the public works day at Riverfront Park, and then we did a kind of an art-centric event at the convention center. I mean, there were obviously a lot of overlaps, but the work that you see now pictured in front of the completed police station includes all of those sentiments. This piece, because I know that you might have questions, was really planned and designed before the murder of George Floyd. So there was some conversation in the community about whether the word should be changed, some of the words should come off, what have you. We did make one change, but our partners, we worked very closely with the police department, felt that this is an aspirational piece, the message is one of, you know, increased vision and value, and if you haven't had a chance to see it up close, it is beautifully fabricated. So we are, we're delighted to have worked with many people in the community to make this happen. Let's go to the next piece. Salem Convention Center, as you know, has a wonderful collection of art, much of it placed there through a partnership with the Oregon Artist Series Foundation, on which I also serve on the board. A kitchen renovation generated $9,000 in half a percent for public art, and we were able to collaborate with our friends at the Oregon Artist Series Foundation to secure a gift from them of an additional $6,000, which enabled us to have a budget of $15,000 to purchase what we thought would be right for that building, which was a large painting that was reflective of the Willamette Valley. And given the budget, we could work directly to look at the work of a number of artists from the Salem, Greater Salem area. We ultimately selected this work titled Home Pool by Richard Thompson, an artist who grew up on a farm in Dayton. This is an oil-on-canvas piece. It is gigantic, 78 inches by 108 inches, which will be delivered to the convention center in the coming weeks. We are, we're very, very excited. He's an artist who had a long distinguished higher education career in multiple locations. Let's go to the next slide. Coming up, and I'm, I drive by the library all the time, I'm super excited to see the windows being opened up on the Commercial Street side. So we have, went through a similar process for the library, half percent funds generated by the seismic upgrade, and went through another public process, and our open RFQ, selected an artist to create a work for the wall here that you see. Her name is Amanda Wojcik. She is a Eugene artist. She happens to be the department head of the Art Department at the University of Oregon, and she is, we, she's making some revisions to her work, but it will be a wall-based work, mostly metal relief hanging on this big wall. And as a, I'm a regular library user, so I am super excited about this new space in Salem. Let's go to the next slide. The public art fund, and thank you again for your reconsideration of some of the restrictions that were in it, because we found that over the past few years, there were some significant maintenance, and really maintenance issues for the city's collection, and so we, we asked you to consider allowing us to use more of a previous allocation for maintenance than for straight allocations. So those, those interior restrictions on our fund now allow the Salem Public Art Commission more flexibility to spend more on acquisition when that's an opportunity, but also to take care of work that needs repair as those needs come up. Let's go to the next slide. Looking forward, we know that there are some iconic works in prominent locations like the Echo Earth Ball that are suffering from, let's just say, climate issues, you know, cold, wet, freezing, you name it. We know that we, well, we commissioned a report from a conservator. The conservation work itself is about a quarter of $1 million, with some of the city's contingency funds added on. It's about a $400,000-plus project. We will be looking at some grant-seeking opportunities, and we'll be in conversation with all of you as what we see might be options moving forward. We know that there will be some new capital projects coming forward, and we're very much looking forward to those opportunities. We also are very interested in collaborating with parks to see if we can look at some temporary sighting of public artworks seasonally, you know, as we, and we hope that we are, continue to be value-added for the city. I think this is our last slide, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you, Chris, do you have a portion of the bond for the library renovation for public art? Is there any in that?
Yes.
That's what's paying for the?
That's correct.
Okay, the wall mount?
Yes. Oh, and I should say, Mr. Mayor, that in the process, and this is in the written report, in the process of clearing out the collection for the demolition to happen at the library, we did a lot of cleaning and packing and assessing and moving some of the permanently mounted pieces out. They're all in a professional art storage facility in Portland. But they'll, not all the work at the library is going to fit back into the library, so there may be some moving around.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Yes, Counselor Lewis?
Thanks, Chris, for coming. My question is about the Eco Earth Globe, something that started about the day that I came here 20 years ago. $400,000 is an awful lot of money to repair. I just want to make sure that on the commission's part, there is a strong interest in maintaining that piece of art.
Very strong on our part. We, you know, the city has a contractor of record for art conservation. They're very, very good. They're, one of their best people happened to be in Washington State on her way back to California. We brought her to Salem. I was down at the Echo Earth Ball on a freezing cold morning while she was up on a lift tapping the tiles. And, you know, there's a professional assessment that says that the ball is solid, that the regrouding may be the answer, and/or should be the answer. And, you know, we think the ball needs to be repaired, and we will look at some, some public and private funding options and make some recommendations, but we just, we just went through that whole assessment process. So SPAC will not have another meeting again until January. But personally, with the, the opening of the Rotary Amphitheater, and the city taking over that end of the park, and the wonderful landscaping that's going in, and the proximity to the Peter Courtney Bridge, and the fact that that park has a really diverse group of users, I think the Echo Earth Ball needs to be repaired. And so we'll, we're not a group of professional fundraisers. Well, some of us are, but we're volunteers in our capacity with SPAC, and, you know, we'll, we will look at options, but we'll come back to you with, with, you know, some of the recommendations.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I came onto council, I was the council liaison to Eco Earth and actually worked with the people putting that together. And never being one to just sit back, I was the volunteer that sought contributions to sponsor the icons that were actually put on the Eco Earth Globe as well. And so, you know, our community has been very supportive of that project, and I'm sure they will continue to be that way. It was an old ugly acid bowl that was sitting there, and we made it into a wonderful piece of art, and we need to make sure that it continues on.
Thank you for that comment. Mary Heinzman, one of the original instigators, was down with us that, that cold morning with the conservators, as was a mom and two little kids, looking at things up close. And I said, well, be careful, there's a lift there, you know, you've got to stay back from this equipment. And she said, we will. But yeah, there are many community leaders who were the original contributors are still living in our community, and so relooping back to some of those folks will be, should be part of this process.
I get regular phone calls from Mayor Gertnerich.
Oh, yeah. He's the one that kept beating me up as far as putting that pedestrian bridge across the mental island as well, and so.
Chris, just leave your number, and I'll have Roger give you a call.
Oh, yes, he's, 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 he is in touch with us.
I'll bet.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, thank you again. Really appreciate your report.
Yes, thank you so much for your report. I didn't have a question, but thank you, and please extend our gratitude to all the art commissioners.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on then to public comment. And I have a fairly substantial group, all on 5A, all from, generally from Paradise, Paradise Island Park. So I'm going to start with Dave Gould. You have three minutes, and then I'll ask you to please stop.
My name's Jerry Taylor. I'm sitting in for Dave.
Wait, 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 wait. You're sitting in for Dave?
We tried, we tried to sign Jerry up two weeks in a row, and neither time would the system let it work.
Oh, okay, well, I just want to get your name again, Jerry Taylor. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, I just want, you have to get on my list here.
Thank you. I want to start out very kind. I was hungry, and you fed me. I was thirsty, you gave me the drink. I was naked, and you clothed me. And we all can say amen to that because it's very kind. But if we live in Paradise Island, people aren't doing anything about, I cannot take my grandkids fishing, I cannot take my wife for a walk down there, we cannot even drive down there, so much trouble. And you're talking about $400,000 to repair a ball? And, and my question is to this, I start off meek, but if we're not getting any response, then I think we've got to raise our little, our voice a little, because it's the only way sometimes people hear. So if camping's legal, I'd like to know how many of you people go down at Cascade Park? I go down there every day. I would like to know how many of you have walked down there. I would not let my wife walk down there, I'd be afraid. But here's my point. If I brought, if I bought tents for 10 people and took them up into your neighborhood and says, here, I'll give you $100 to stay all night, you'd have them out of there in two days. Why make it legal to have them over in my area in no place else? And you keep promising to do something, you keep promising to do something, but yet nothing's being done. Now you go and vote to extend, well, how long do you have to vote? I mean, we can't even live in this area. We, our bikes are stolen, our lawnmowers are stolen, and there's good people down there. But why can't we spread them all over town in your neighborhood and everybody else's neighborhood? Well, it's against the law. Well, who made the law to put them in my neighborhood? I'd just like to see something done without sounding evil, without sounding upset, without sounding, but if I don't, every one of you council members here, and I say this with all the love I have, I would love to set somebody up in a tent in front of your house and see how you would like it, and see how fast it'd take you to respond to have that move. We need to find places for them, but it's just, let's spread it out over town, please. I just ask you, please spread it out over town that they can stay in your neighborhood? You'll go get up Christmas morning, and guess what? You're going to look out your window and see everything's hunky-dory. Over here, we'll look up and see trash in the street, hearing gunshots, hearing fighting. The fire yesterday was caused from several people fighting. So again, why can't we move them in your neighborhood and everybody else's neighborhood? I'll tell you why, because you voted to keep them in my neighborhood, and that is no fair to us over here to have to buy bikes and lawn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. I'm sorry, your time's up. Okay, Dave Gould?
I'm sorry, Mayor Bennett. Dave Gould was unavailable today, and so we're moving on to Dennis Sampson, please.
Okay. Do you have any others you're going to cancel?
No, everyone else on the list is correct. Sorry.
Okay, Dennis Sampson.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Dennis Sampson. I live here in Paradise Island. I moved here about two years ago, and I love the area, and I love the park over there. And I used to go there every day, my wife and I, walk it around the lake. It's a beautiful park, or I should say it was. My grandkids would come and visit us. We would walk around the park, ride our bikes around the place, and I felt good because I felt safe with them. And as time went on, a few more tents moved in until, to the point where I believe you guys authorized camping there for them. And I do want to make a note and thank you for getting the RVs and all those things out of there. It was a real bad mess. But I just hope and pray that you guys can continue cleaning up the park so that we can get back to using it like we used to. As I mentioned, my grandson asked why he can't go there no more. And I have to tell him it's not safe. And that hurts my heart because he enjoyed going there, playing on the playground. He lives in an apartment complex, he doesn't have a lot of room to play, and so he likes to come over here. And so I, I would really like to see it cleaned up so we can use it like we used to. The other thing is, wife and I was over there yesterday, we drove through it after the excitement yesterday morning, unfortunately, and it, it's, it's not a pretty place at all anymore. The last time the wife and I walked over there, we were, we walked across the little bridge, you can't drive across it, but you can still walk across it. And we got on the other side, a gentleman came up to me and he says, uh, don't walk, and he pointed over to the west, don't walk around over there. I said, well, I wasn't going to. And I said, why? And he says, because the people back in there got machetes and they're armed. And I said, well, I don't plan on walking over there anyway. But wife says, that's it. We're not going to come back here again. I can't come back again. I don't want to be here. So there's, there's things like that are happening. And that same day that we were walking, some gal...
I'm sorry, Mr. Sampson, I apologize, your, your time's up. So thank you. Any questions for Ms. Sampson? Linda Thomas. They've got you muted. There we go.
There we go. Hello. I've lived here for almost five years, and when I first came, I wasn't a widow, and now I am. And, you know, you used to feel really safe here, but that's not the feeling now. Even the other day, my neighbor down the street, a lady came walking up carrying a suitcase, and she wanted to come up on her deck, and she said, I'm sorry, but you can't come up any closer. And she didn't know where she was from, but she appeared to be a homeless person. We have a greenway that doesn't feel comfortable walking in because they've come through and cut our fence two times, and then they've come through and they've stolen bikes, like has been mentioned already. And it's just very uncomfortable. It's not, people have sat in their homes, they wake up at night, and sometimes they hear people talking outside their trailers. And it's just, one lady woke up one night and she saw two people walking up the street carrying something. Now, this is like 2:00 in the morning. And so it's uncomfortable knowing that they're coming in here, and we're sleeping, and they're walking around looking for things they can take. They cut our, they cut locks off of our carports, our sheds, and they steal, like they've said, bikes and other items. So it's just really uncomfortable, and we know it's a big problem, but we're hoping that something can be done about it. And the sign they put up that if you entered, you could be attacked, I mean, that's really bad. I went down there one time, I would never go down there again. It's like, it's like going to another land. It's very scary. So anyway, that's what I had to say.
Thank you very much for, for coming and sharing. Ralph Morgan.
I, I see you don't have a mask on, so I took mine partly off. Did anybody read my letter? Don't raise your hand. I, I, I got to say that Cory has done a phenomenal job getting you guys to listen. All, all we are is, you know, we're basically tenants that own our home. We can't, they've already said basically what our problem is, they're stealing from us. And it isn't, it may not be just them, but they certainly have taken the brunt of it. I had a thought when I, when I wrote my letter in to you, that, which if you did read it, I congratulate you because my handwriting stinks anymore. But I, I just think that if you put them someplace where they could, where they had to pay, that's, that's a responsibility that, that they're going to, they either pay, and I don't know how this would work, but I think it would work. People take pride in something they have to pay for. And I'll guarantee you, if they wanted cigarettes or they wanted something to drink, they'd find the money to do it, or they'd steal it from us. You know, it's just, it's a sad situation. I commend you for doing all this for nothing, but something has to be done. I think that's, I won't, I won't dwell anymore.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, bud.
Cory Poole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilors. Nice to see you again. I'm going to be sharing my screen here, and since I am speaking on behalf of SEMCA, I understand I have five minutes, I believe, on this item?
Yes.
Hopefully, I won't use the same whole time.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Cory Poole. I own Paradise Island Park at 3100 Turner Road. We are a community of 213 households with an average age over 70 years old. It's been another hard week. It's been another week of our fence being cut in the middle of the night, of homeless prowlers walking through our community, stealing anything they can carry off, and another week of car break-ins. I know they're in front of the park because I watched them on the cameras going back to the park. Add to that more park trees in Cascade Gateway Park being cut down, more human misery and suffering along the damp and muddy tracks to the natural areas of our once beautiful city park. And to top all that off, an explosion and serious fire that destroyed an entire compound, endangering the lives of the people around the compound just a few feet away from Mill Creek in our once beautiful park. The homeless compound that burned yesterday was about 40 feet by 40 feet and packed with trash and bicycles, I might add. The homeless campers who live nearby say there was a fight going on in the camp, which concluded with someone yelling, no, don't, before the fire broke out. The fire consumed tons of trash, including propane canisters that shot into the sky as they exploded. Burning plastic created choking black smoke that was visible for miles around. The fire endangered the trees surrounding the camp, and we were really lucky that the people living in the compound got out alive. We're also really lucky that this happened during, with the damp areas around the, the compound. If this had happened a few months ago, I doubt there would be anything left in that part of the park standing. This is the third camp to go up in flames in Cascade Gateway since your camping policy was implemented. These disasters are not only likely, they are inevitable. Theft in the surrounding neighborhood has also continued. I documented several prowlers in the past week resulting in cut fence, several thefts, and at least one car break-in. The victims of these crimes are all elderly. The homeless campers carry their stolen merchandise back to the camp Cascade Gateway Park, knowing that once back in their camps, the police will not enter their camps to search for stolen property. You would have to literally catch them in the act of stealing in order to get the police to do anything about it. Large trees continue to be cut down in the park as well. I understand the city is now providing firewood to the campers, defying the city's own anti-fire and city park ordinance. This new policy will likely only increase the likelihood of more camps burning down. How much longer can this go on? Vote enforcement won't help us. The police won't help us. And I'm very sad to say that so far, our elected officials also won't help us. I'm not sure how bad it will have to be before you realize that you cannot make this work. No amount of half-measures, Band-Aids, or talking points will change the reality that a city park is not a suitable place to locate hundreds of our most vulnerable and needy citizens. I've heard that we can't afford to make secure surface camps because the city doesn't have the land. I've shown you that you have the land. Staff says the sites I propose are unsuitable because they're in the floodplain or too close to the airport, or otherwise unsuitable for homeless camps. Almost all the current campsites in Cascade Gateway Park are not only in the floodplain, but in the floodway. If we have a high-water event, hundreds of people and their belongings will be washed down Mill Creek or the Willamette River. The city has over 400 acres of vacant land in Mill Creek Industrial Park, out of the floodplain, not near the airport, not near neighborhoods. The city has hundreds of acres across, near the airport, not in the flight path, not in floodplain. These areas could be used for camps if council had the will. The city has dozens of acres around Bill Fry Drive. These areas could be used for camps if the council had the will. The city staff will quickly counter that these properties are not ideal locations for a homeless camp. I think that any of these locations would be a better location for a homeless camp than the city park. City staff would also say that it costs between $100,000 and $1 million per small camp to keep it going, per year. Well, I made some calls and got some actual costs for you. My, my demo was based on 30 tents, each with a 20 by 20 foot site. It would cost $12,264 per year, per camp, not per site, per camp. This would include three porta-potties emptied weekly, a drop box dumpster, and a secure fence, all installed without city staff and maintained on contract. $12,000 per year. Other cities have been making camps like this with good results. When camps are kept small and spread out around the city, the need for staff involvement is minimal. The homeless camps in Portland just got upgraded to these tiny structures to replace the tents. What if we could do something like that for our city? I know that these problems are difficult. I know these solutions won't be universally popular. I've heard from many other neighborhoods that, that they have homeless people. I've heard from other neighborhoods that they have crime.
Excuse me, Cory, Mayor, the time is up.
I apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Courtney, you're going to have to...
I thought it was five minutes, not three minutes.
Did he get his five?
Yes, I'm sorry. It's just hard to see with, with the screen share.
Yeah, well, you just, I appreciate you jumping in. Thank you, Cory. Okay, Clifford Eifler Rodriguez.
Hello, Mayor, Council, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Clifford Eifler Rodriguez. I am in Ward 6. I am actually also speaking, testifying on 5A, but I, I'm testifying in support of, right now, the, our community is in a tough position. And by extending the emergency declaration, it just gives the city more tools to, to do the work. Unfortunately, we don't, as a community, we haven't come up with a tenable solution. You know, I think you see some of that tension with the folks who testified earlier. You know, they're feeling the impact on their own community, and I think we're feeling the impact citywide. And that, that speaks to the tension that we kind of feel across the city as a whole. It's not only this, but, you know, some of the councilors spoke to the domestic terrorism that we've experienced here and now exported to DC. I, I don't know if councillor or mayor, you're aware that some of the folks who have assaulted people here in the capital of Salem went to Washington DC, including those who have been charged, and they were given leave by Marion County Judge to go attend rallies in DC and enacted additional violence. It just speaks to the tension that, of leadership. You know, Mayor, you and I have had discussions and discourse, and there have been a lot of community groups reaching out to you for various reasons, both houseless, both for violence, but we're asking for leadership. I mean, this, this is a critical point, and there's a lot going on, you know, between the pandemic, between, you know, keeping our community safe from folks roving gangs of, you know, white extremists, carrying guns on our streets. My family doesn't go out to rallies anymore, you know, and, and supporting our houseless neighbors. And, and part of the issue i- is what can we do as a community to, to all do it? All do this, this, this work, it doesn't just fall on you as a councillor or mayor, but it's having the appetite as a community to support solutions that are tenable, that can be long-term, and recognizing the humanity in, in folks around this city. I appreciate your time and look forward to, to you guys sticking the lead, but also calling for everyone in the community to lend a hand. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Lori Walker. There you are.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Okay. I'm an advocate for people, I'm in Ward 2. I'm an advocate for unsheltered people in Salem. So first of all, I'd like to say, I am not scared to go to homeless camps during the day. I have never had anyone threaten me. There's times when I've kind of looked at some people and think that might be a little sketchy, but I wouldn't go at night, the same as I wouldn't go walking around most places in Salem at night by myself. So I think my opinions are, I really get bothered when people say "they," "them," because they are us. They are our family members, they are our siblings, our children, our parents, our cousins. All of these people have family members either in Salem, other places in Oregon, or elsewhere. So I think I was in support of the camps when this all started. I was pretty vocal with that. Most advocates were very supportive of the camps. However, I think the way it's turned out, what we're seeing now, is that they were set up for failure because there was no plan in place. So the examples I'd like to give would be, if I went to a state camp, county camp, park, national park, I'd have an assigned camp number. I wouldn't have a tent two feet from a waterway. Our camping program is a failure the way that it is now currently. What was thought to be 100 people at each park, in fact, is about 300 or more at Cascade Park, 200 or more at Wallace Marine, three porta-potties at Cascade for 300 and some people, and it's too far for most people to even make it there. Mud-filled messes everywhere with garbage everywhere, it looks like Bangladesh, not Salem, Oregon. And I, people need better than that. We need to give people better than this. So if camping is going to continue, I think we need to have assigned camp areas, approved distance from waterways, we need rules and accountability, more bathrooms, no camping in certain areas, no cutting trees. We need to hold the state of Oregon accountable for a broken mental health system that's putting so many mentally ill people on the streets. These folks need help. There's no, Marion County Mental Health isn't coming out there providing services, the state's not coming out. So I think that with rules, with supervision, with smaller, more supervised areas, it would be very workable, but we just haven't given people the tools for that. The same people that are bothering Cory Poole and the same folks at Paradise Park are the same people that are also hurting.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you. Okay. Do I have anyone else who wants to speak on an agenda item? Okay. We will move on then to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move in approval of the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar. Second.
Second by Anderson.
Thank you. The consent calendar includes Item 3.1A, December 7, 2020, Draft City Council Minutes. Item 3.3A, reappointment of John B. Wilson as Municipal Judge pro tem. Item 3.3B, subordination of two federal home loans for multifamily property. And that concludes the consent calendar.
Okay, any discussion if the quarter would please call a roll.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Okay, motion passes. I'd like to open oray the public hearing if the recorder...
The city council will now conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public testimony regarding Amendment Number Two to the 2020-2021 Housing and Community Development Annual Action Plan. The hearing will begin with a staff presentation. Individuals testifying are limited to three minutes.
Shelley? Good evening, Mayor Bennett and members of the council. I'm Shelley Ahinger, the Federal Programs Manager located in the Urban Development Department. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to provide an opportunity for the public to hear and comment on the proposed amendment to the 2020-2021 Home Annual Action Plan. Just for background, the Annual Action Plan addresses funding goals and priorities that have been identified by the council in the strategic plan, which include affordable housing, homelessness, and addressing social services. The annual plan was approved by council in June of this year. As an amendment, we also went through a similar public notice process. As of this evening, no comments were submitted for review. However, the staff went through previous comments received in regards to this allocation and took those into consideration. The project that's being recommended this evening for funding will result in additional rental housing units in the city of Salem. One of the goals in the consolidated plan is to expand affordable housing for persons who are low, very low, or moderate income. I present tonight what a single-member household or one person would make in the city of Salem to be eligible for this housing. The 29,160 is a maximum number. And if there were two persons in the household, 33,360. That would mean a single parent and a child for a two-member household, or just an individual for the single-member household. Households that are at 60% of our metropolitan area would be eligible for these apartment homes. All subrecipients enter into a contractual agreement with the city in regards to how the resources will be spent, as well as some terms to ensure that in exchange for the investment of federal funds, that the property complies with the city's desires. Before you are a few of the things that will be in the subrecipient agreement if approved for this particular project, including the development of a local community committee, a trustee where there will be a 20-year affordability period. If they receive funds from Oregon Housing and Community Services, that affordability period may be extended up to 40 or 50 years. We will make sure and do an environmental review, which is an important part of all federal funds. And that environment review, if there was anything that was not going to comply with the Code of Federal Regulations, then we would enter into a mitigation plan with the owners. We ensure there are licensed contractors. And in some cases, the licensed contractors would have to pay based upon Davis Bacon wage rates. And we would follow up during the construction process to ensure that the units meet our standards in regards to housing. In addition to that, after the project closed, an annual property compliance report for the 20-year period would be required. The city, through the federal program, staff would conduct physical inspections. And if there were any complaints, they would also get those complaints and try to address them. In addition to that, the property would not be eligible to sell to another property, another party unless the city approved. And if it was to be sold, the purchaser would then assume all the obligations that was in that agreement for that 20-year period. The project that we're talking about is Cottage Street Apartments located at 905 and 925 Cottage Street in Salem. Dev Northwest is the sponsor, and the amount that has been recommended by staff is $393,539. Next steps. Should council approve tonight's amendment, the city would then submit to HUD for review and approval the change in our annual action plan. In addition to that, in January, we would go before the Historic Landmarks Commission, January 21. We would enter into that contractual agreement, the subrecipient agreement that we discussed, by January the 31st. And by the second quarter of 2021, it would be when the purchase would take place, if not before then. As I said, we would do ongoing monitoring, both during the construction period, as well throughout the 20 years of the compliance period. In addition to that, we will be reporting back to the public and the council in August in regards to where the project is at and what potential next steps would be in order. With that, I'd like to say thank you for your consideration and turn it back over to Mayor Bennett.
Thanks, Shelley. Thank you very much. I'm gonna call on Emily Ryman.
Hello, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. For the record, my name is Emily Ryman. I'm here as the CEO of Dev Northwest. And our Salem address is at 528 Cottage Street Northeast. As you heard from Shelley, we are here tonight requesting additional home funds for the acquisition of the Evergreen Church and Parsonage on Cottage Street. The project will add 19 units of affordable housing for people below 60% of area median income. Because the council heard extensively about this project at a November hearing, I don't want to take up additional time with details on the project design or the need for housing. However, I did want to add a couple of notes related to our request for the home funding. First, I can't overstate how important these local investments are for getting affordable housing developments over the finish line. State and federal funding for these projects is fiercely competitive, and mere fractions of a point can make the difference between a successful or unsuccessful application. The extent of local support and our ability to show leverage funds are two scored components of those applications. So your decision tonight will have a direct impact on our competitiveness when we apply for those additional state funds. Second, and acknowledging a set of concerns expressed by the Grant Neighborhood Association, I would just build on what Shelley noted about the restrictions that come with home funds. That 20-year affordability criteria, as well as extensive monitoring and oversight from city staff. I just want to note that Dev Northwest welcomes that affordability period and the ongoing partnership with staff. And as Shelley said, the funds we're most likely to apply for, for the state to finish the project, would have probably a 40-plus affordability period with them and parallel oversight from state staff, monitoring annually, just as the city staff would be. So again, we welcome that. Those affordability criteria and monitoring are directly in line with our mission and in line with what we do as an organization. And Dev Northwest is committed to this project in the long term. So we look forward to those ongoing partnerships. Finally, Kristen Rutherford actually asked me to just mention a few words about Dev Northwest's future intentions around housing development in Salem. There was a lot of discussion about the uniqueness of this project being both a redevelopment project and intending to add one-bedroom and studio apartments. But I just wanted the council to know that Dev Northwest hopes that this is the first of many more projects in years to come, and that our goal would be to develop a full continuum of affordable housing in Salem. So that would include rental housing of larger units intended for larger families. It would also include community land trust homes for moderate-income and first-time buyers, which is a type of development that was enabled just in the last couple of years with some new state funding called lift homeownership. And so we're always scouting for property that would be good for that full range of projects. And we know that the housing crisis is such that we need more affordable housing at every part of the continuum. So again, we're hoping that this is the first project of many more to come, and that we'll have similar partnerships to this, addressing many more units of housing for Salem. I will wrap it up there, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And I would just note that our Director of Real Estate Development, Erin Day, is also here and available to answer questions, but didn't have additional remarks planned unless there is something that you guys would like to direct at her.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Ryman? Nordike?
Oh, sure. Just a comment, really. I know that this has been a long road, and I appreciate all the public input and comment leading us up to this point. And I want to welcome opportunities to work with you and your organization. Addressing homelessness and affordable housing are very directly tied to one each other. The more affordable housing we have, the less homelessness we have. So I look forward to opportunities to partner and to learn more about your organization and find good solutions for Salem. I just know, the more people we get indoors, the less people we have camping at Cascade Gateway Park. So thank you for your work.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more.
And I'd ask you, I'd ask counselors... This is for questions, questions and answers from the staff, as well as Ms. Ryman. Anyone have any questions for Shelley? I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move, we approve Amendment Number Two to the 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan and direct staff to submit the amendment to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Second.
Second by Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the comments that we heard during the public comment period and this public hearing are directly connected. And the more that we can provide public, affordable housing and increase our housing inventory, the more likely we are to make a dent in our homelessness problem. And this project is significant, and I fully support it, and I encourage my colleagues to support it as well.
Okay, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I agree with Counselor Hoy. And I just want to add that we've been on this road, this particular path, on this particular project on Cottage Street for many, many, many months. And just so the public understands, the original concern that the council had was not at all with affordable housing, not at all with the need for affordable housing, not at all with the change of the zoning to higher-density residential. The concern was the original project intended to have a commercial zoning encrobed, get inside a residential district, and that was the concern with the council. It's never been no affordable housing. It's been let's keep residential districts residential and don't get the camel's nose of commercial zoning into residential districts. And so I'm glad to see we've managed to do that, and this is a terrific project. And I look forward to working with Dev Northwest on many more projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if the recorder would call the roll.
Counselor Osik?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Nordike? Counselor Nordike? Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Check one more time to see if Counselor Nordike is...
Counselor Nordike?
He just dropped off right before you made the call.
Her video dropped right as you were calling her name.
Okay.
Now, we'll, she gets back, we'll, if you don't mind, we'll do a quick rule suspension, let her vote.
Okay.
Motion passes.
And just, Mr. Mayor, she texted me and saying she dropped again, but she'll be back.
You send her a note and say you want to vote yes. I'll just put her in.
Hey, no votes by proxy.
Never mind.
She's just re-entered.
Last meeting, Nanki.
Anyway, we'll do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, rules change for council.
There we go, Counselor Nordike.
Are we taking the vote now?
Yeah.
My sincere apologies, my connection's been unstable. I vote in favor of the project. Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. We'll move on then to special orders of business. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move city council adopt Resolution Number 2020-57 to extend the declaration of emergency related to COVID-19 until June 1, 2021, and modify restrictions on public gatherings.
Second.
Second by Nordike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I entered this motion with a slight hesitancy, but I'm... My hesitancy is swaged by the city manager's intention to come back to us with a plan to address the issue in Cascade Gateway Park. I think it was a well-intentioned move that we made, and I still think it was the right move at the right time. It just hasn't worked out as we had hoped. And I think it's time for us to redirect our course and make some course corrections here. And I am confident that the city manager and the staff are going to be able to do that in a way that will address the issue there and elsewhere. I also just want to say for those folks that thinks that the homelessness issue or issues are limited to these two parks, I encourage you to get out into the city more. This is a citywide issue. I personally have had a homeless person sleeping on my front porch because she didn't have any place else to go, and it looked like a safe place. And they're all over my, people are all over my ward living, doing the best they can in this really difficult time. And I think it's time that we look at new options that we haven't really fully considered in the past for places for people to be and to be safe. So I support this motion very much.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo what Counselor Hoy said, and the Cascade Gateway Park and Paradise Island are in my ward. So I'm particularly tuneful to that, but it's not the only place in my ward that we've got an issue with homelessness. And I appreciate the comments, especially of Mr. Poole, who has kept this issue in front of us. And I really look forward to 30 days from now, which will be our next meeting, about our next meeting, when the city manager can present something for us to do something about this issue that is not caused by us. It's caused by national policies, but it ends up coming down to us, and we've got to deal with it.
Yeah. I will add, let's add the state policies on mental health. I want to support what Lori had to say as well.
I agree with that too, Mr. Mayor. We are the victim of trickle-down, all the way down to the bottom, right?
Yeah, we're where it all trickles down to.
Exactly.
I just couldn't agree with what you and Counselor Hoy are saying more. This is not a solution. This is moving a problem around. And I think it's one of the most unfortunate situations, but it is one that I believe, after talking with the manager, that we are looking at really working on a variety of solutions. We will still have people living in a hedge of a house I own on 14th Street. I know that. We will still have people in my backyard every once in a while. If anyone thinks any of us are immune to being impacted by this issue, they are just dead wrong. This is, everyone in town is running into this problem, whether it's remotely or in their own neighborhood. So I just can't, I can't agree with the sentiment I hear from folks at Paradise Island. That really is a wonderful place. That park is a beautiful park. I've visited for over 50 years, and it's just one of... I've visited for over 50 years, and it's just one of the real gems in our park system. And to see what's happening there and then go across the river and take a look at what's happening in West Salem, and we just can't have this. This cannot keep going. And what I worry about is whether we can find a solution that houses the hundreds of people we're talking about. I mean, this problem is 500 people in the two parks, 500, 600 people in the two parks. There is, I will, I will look forward to the manager's plan, but finding an organized camping opportunity in this city, as expensive as that will be with the kind of management costs and infrastructure costs it will have, to meet the needs of those folks is going to be probably the challenge of his career. I'll look forward to how he solves that problem. It's a very, very difficult one. So, but we certainly can figure out how to disperse people out of those parks and get this thing back under control. This is, this is out of control. We saw it out of control downtown, where everybody could see it. Now it's been isolated in parts where not everyone can see it, but those who do know exactly, exactly what the downside of homelessness looks like. And I think from other comments, we have, this is, this is one of the challenges, really, of our, kind of our generation of city councils, is how to deal and how, whether, how humanely we can deal with this issue. And I will, I will say what we have done, and people sort of, you're doing nothing. No, we're not. I can, I know Counselor Hoy knows this. I think all of you know the number of housing units we are adding for the homeless, the opportunities we're creating for the homeless folks that, that want to exit or need assistance in exiting, the added programs, and it persists. It's just a persistent difficulty that we will continue to work on. I want people to know, we will continue to work on that. This is not an issue that we're going to just turn a blind eye to. So we'll keep moving forward. Counselor Lewis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to talk about what I'm going to refer to as the criminal element of the homeless population. We've heard lots and lots of testimony from the folks at Paradise Island Park. They're not talking about not accepting homeless near them. They're talking about the crimes, the theft, the invasion of privacy, the ruining of their quality of life. And then when I, when I hear things like, all they've got to do is come in my yard, steal my bike, and get back to their camp, put a tarp over it, and the police will not come after them. And then you see things on the newspaper, the front page of the newspaper today or yesterday, unannounced visitors will be attacked. Just a couple of minutes ago, we talked about affordable housing and the right to inspect the property. And I don't believe that we are forcing the issue enough in our, in our parks. Therefore, the criminal aspect is growing. And I would encourage the police department, even if this is extended tonight, to beef up the security for these neighbors and do what they can. And when, when they're faced with not going into a park, they simply recognize that, no, that's the city's property, and the law enforcement has the right to go in there.
Counselor Nordike.
Thank you. So I really want to echo some of the comments made by Councilors Hoy and Anderson. And I would like to add that we haven't identified what's at stake if we don't extend this emergency, which is the very real potential for loss of life. With a camping ban in place that would force people to sleep without a tent in the middle of a long winter, and in addition, and unlike last year, they not only have a long winter, they have the prospect of COVID. It is untenable to take away the only means to self-isolate in a pandemic. And that's quoted from the Statesman Journal article on this topic, the Executive Director of Midlament Valley Community Action Agency. Nobody wants us to go back to a season of persons sleeping on our sidewalks because it is unsafe for them, it is unhealthy for them. It puts people at a risk of loss of life, which trumps all other considerations. Loss of life is the single most important thing. So camping can and must improve, and there are lots of ways that we can do that. And having conversations with city staff behind the scenes, volunteering at the campsites, meeting with homeless advocates, speaking with homeless individuals, I want us to do better, and I want us to work together as a community to do better. I applaud this council for recognizing homelessness and affordable housing as our two top priorities and seeing the inextricable link between the two of them. But when we consider the alternative to not extending this camping ban and having a repeat of what happened last year and all of the serious humanitarian considerations and potential for loss of life, I have no choice in the matter. And I look forward to seeing the city manager's plan and to working with city staff on finding the best solutions we can with the duct tape and other basic means that we have to fix a problem beyond the city's financial means to solve alone.
Thank you. Counselor Hoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to add one remark to my comments, and that's that regarding the folks in Paradise Island, I, you know, I spent my youth during the summer occasionally there. I had an extended family member, family members who lived there. So I, I know the bucolic nature of that place. I used to ride around the, the very quiet streets on their three-wheeled bike when I was a kid. So that's been a really foundational part of Salem for a long, long time, and I, their comments are not lost on me, and I just wanted to say that out loud.
Exactly. Okay, everybody, oh, Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this will be my last no vote of 20 years. And I know this one's tough, but we, we're moving the problem around. And, you know, no offense to Manager Powers, this is a tough one, but council was being besieged by testimony saying these people don't belong sleeping on the downtown streets. And so we made a decision to, to open two parks. And again, it gets back to my earlier comments, be mindful of the individual as we make decisions, knowing that, you know, there's a hard decision to make here, and I personally don't know of one that would fix this, be that putting together organized camps or, you know, any number of different options. This is tough, and, and I know that anytime people are allowed to congregate uncontrolled in, in the way that it's taking place in these two parks, that it's definitely not a win. I do want to thank the city manager for changing the definition regarding public gatherings because that's been one of my previous complaints, where it was no more than two people can ever meet on a sidewalk for 10 minutes. And so thank you for that, Steve. But this needs to be fixed. I'll be watching to see what the recommendations have moved forward, knowing that this will be solved in 30 days. There'll, there'll be some kind of a plan that'll be presented in 30 days. But again, that plan can take a long time, and meanwhile, these people who are being directly impacted and having their lives truly upended is untenable as well. So it's a tough one, but again, I'll be registering a no vote and looking forward to seeing how the council moves forward.
Yes, Counselor Lewis.
Yeah, sorry, I'll be quick. I meant to start my comments with this. I want to personally send out a thank you to the city employees, from City Managers Powers, former Police Chief Jerry Moore, and now Chief Womack, Director Fernandez and the Public Works people, Brady Rogers, the code enforcement. These are all the folks that have had their jobs changed dramatically in the last couple of years. They're the ones that are now going through the parks and cleaning up. I want to make a special thank you to Mark Bechtel, who I know him as a manager who is always going to be doing what he asks his employees to do. So I know he's out there cleaning up. And also, I want to mention Gretchen Bennett, who, you know, it was interesting, being the Human Rights Commission liaison, now she's the homelessness liaison, job description change that I'm sure she didn't apply for.
Thank you. Now, I just want to, just funny, I guess for me anyway, want to second your comments, Counselor Lewis. I really think the, the really straight-from-the-shoulder call on the department and the city manager to take into account the level, and I believe in talking with the police chief, he fully understands that this kind of camping situation has a, has an outcome of criminality that really needs to be addressed as, as part of the ongoing discussion. I hope it also, for anybody, I don't think there's anyone on the council, but for anybody that thinks we ought to be defunding the police, I hope you take note of what these poor people at Paradise Island had to say and what we hear from people in West Salem and over in Counselor Hoy's area. This is, this is really all hands on deck. We need everyone we've got. So, anyway, let's go ahead and have the recorder call a roll.
Counselor Hoy.
Aye.
Counselor Nordike.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
I'm sorry, but I must vote no.
Counselor Anderson.
Aye.
Counselor Nanki.
Aye.
Counselor Leung.
Aye.
Counselor Osick.
Aye.
Mayor Bennett.
Aye. Okay, motion passes. We're going to move on to our information reports. Anyone want to add to the information? Yes, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very interested in Item 6C about the stormwater rate credit program, and I'm wondering if there's anybody who can tell us about, a little more for the public about this good news about how we're trying to help people who have problems paying their bills. If there's nobody here, I'll just say it.
Peter Fernandez has just.
Oh, Mayor, if I may, I believe Robert Chandler is also on the call, and he would have the details. But in general, what this is, is an opportunity for people that own larger properties to get a credit on their stormwater utility fee, so, because they're not, they're not generating as much stormwater. So that's, that's the generality. If you want to get into details, then Dr. Chandler awaits, awaits your detailed questions.
No, that's perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay. Don't need anymore? Okay. Anyone else on, on any of these? All right, we will move then to.
To adjournment.
Not yet. We don't have, we have, wait, wait, wait. We have some folks who've been waiting very patiently to talk with you all. So we're going to move to a public comment on issues not on the agenda, and we'll start with Kathleen Dewanna.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good. Mayor Bennett and councilors, thank you for the opportunity once again to comment on the proposed multi-use path or mixed-use trail through the city's historic Pioneer Cemetery and the privately-owned Pioneer Alley LLC. As you know, I am the managing partner in Pioneer Alley and to date the sole person legally and ethically authorized to speak to Pioneer Alley's interests. I've raised transparency issues and accountability concerns with you before, and with humility and the utmost respect, I do so again. Staff are presently keeping the identity from me of an individual whose staff relied upon for this report to speak to Pioneer Alley's interests. No doubt about it, compared to the corporate cost giant, Pioneer Alley is a puny little LLC. Recently, and before any development occurred, this council indicated that it would not side with the citizen neighbors who objected to the new Costco site on the principle that council earlier had made the decision to allow Costco to build at a new site. Nonetheless, in the instant case, Salem City Council previously voted not once, not twice, but three times against opening the mixed-use path through the historic cemetery and now developed and built Pioneer Alley. The detrimental impact on a developed and built site greater than one on a proposed site. Council should apply the same starry decisism-like principle in Pioneer Cemetery and Pioneer Alley that you applied in the Costco decision. Stick with your three-times-decided determination. By negating legal and acquisition expenses, the costs presented in the staff report are simply unrealistic. Moreover, the costs identified are on their face too low. Before you began excavating in Pioneer Cemetery, I believe council owes Salem citizens real plans, real facts, figures on how deep the excavation will be, how long of a cut it will take. At least one expert disagrees with the two-foot depth up to 30 feet in length figure estimated by city engineer staff. Additionally, the report omits known construction costs, such as stormwater drainage control and excavation of stormwater drainage reservoirs. Please be advised that Pioneer Alley will not serve as a city's stormwater collector. Stormwater drainage reservoirs will require cemetery excavation deeper than two feet. As you know, Pioneer Alley is a semi-gated locked community now. So far, the locked gate with occupant-only access has done what the police have not been able to do. The locked gates stop the theft, stop the vandalism, stop the gross littering and human waste, stop the trespass. A mixed-use pass will undo all of that. Solar nights will not only create light pollution, they'll invite access beyond dusk to dawn, illegal access for the cemetery. Option five invites criminals into Pioneer Alley's private property. Moreover, you are taking away control from the private landowner and not providing protection. I suggest you that it sets Pioneer Alley up as attractive for an autonomous zone. I request that you take official notice of the Red House in Portland with its government and police headaches, the injuries to the innocents, the concomitant lawlessness, with the unlawful property owner having given up his private property.
Kathy, Kathy, your time's up. I'm sorry.
Thank you very, very much. I didn't get to the end, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Jim Shepke, did you want to ask a question?
Yeah.
Counselor Lewis. Come back, Kathy.
Yeah, thanks, Kathy. I'm just curious, how many dwelling units are in Pioneer Alley?
How many what?
How many units? How many houses? How many homes?
I have eight.
Eight. All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Ah, Counselor Nanki.
Thanks. And yeah, just a comment, and I've mentioned it several times as this keeps coming back up, that we brought this up as that development was taking place, and we made the decision that we were not going to put that trail in, and they modified their development because of that. And then we didn't follow through as a city to codify certain elements of that. And, you know, this has come up several times since then. Again, it was a decision made, you can never hold a future council hostage to a decision of a previous council, but, but when certain things weren't codified, I mean, we can change a code on anything and say, oh, yeah, you can put a high-rise here or do this as well, but, you know, this, this one's tough. And when, when someone comes and asks us what we're going to do, and council gives them a decision, and they change their development based on that decision to not follow through with that decision simply because it wasn't codified for no fault of the council, to me, that's a kind of a travesty. So I won't care when that decision comes back forth, but I'll be watching you.
Okay, well, it'll, it'll be back. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Jim Shepke. There he is.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Jim Shepke, Word Two. I'm speaking tonight about the mass civil disobedience rally and march that's scheduled for New Year's Day. And five days ago, I put out a petition to my neighbors to see what they think about this, and the petition is addressed to Manager Powers and Chief Womack, and I just wanted to read a little bit of it. Oregon Women for Trump and their allies, the Proud Boys, have announced a mass civil disobedience rally and march to the governor's mansion in Salem on New Year's Day. This would be the fourth time since October that armed drunken menacing marchers from all over Oregon have rampaged through peaceful Salem neighborhood, shouted obscenities, and threatened our governor. This activity is not peaceful protest. It is not an exercise of First Amendment rights. I disagree with the city manager about that. It is illegal. The Salem Revised Code does not allow street marches without a permit, and violators can be fined. The Salem Revised Code does not allow menacing, defined as. The Salem Revised Code does not allow menacing, defined as, quote, "placing another person in fear of imminent, serious physical injury." Menacing is a misdemeanor. The last three times these illegal marches have occurred, the Salem Police Department has done nothing to enforce these laws and keep the peace in our neighborhoods. We refuse to see this happen a fourth time. We demand that the Salem Police Department enforce the law and prevent any mass civil disobedience, which isn't, has nothing to do with the First Amendment in our neighborhood. We deserve to be able to celebrate the New Year with our children and families without armed, drunken, menacing outsiders rampaging through our neighborhood. And hundreds of Salem residents who have signed this petition in the past five days agree, I got over 300 signatures on this petition in just five days. Manager Powers and Chief Womack, do your job and enforce the law. And I want to end by saying that a march was stopped on November 7th. And so the Salem Police Department knows how to do this. They did it on November 7th. You'll recall, there was a social justice peaceful rally at Pringle Park. Some people from that rally attempted to march downtown in the street. They were stopped after one block and told that that was illegal and they need, they needed to disperse, and they did it. And that's all we're asking for on New Year's Day. Do exactly what you did on November 7th. You know how to do it. You did it. It was successful. You can do it again. Those people shouldn't get more than one or two blocks from the Capitol, and they certainly shouldn't get to the Fairmount neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, any questions? Alberto Martinez?
I don't, I think Mr. Martinez wasn't going to speak.
Lori Walker?
Am I unmuted? Okay.
Yep.
Good evening again, Mayor Bennett and councilors. I don't have a video.
Okay.
Okay, so.
There you go.
I'm speaking on behalf of, I'm Ward 2 Scan Neighborhood Chair. In the Scan Neighborhood in October, we had an event in Busch Park promoted by the Proud Boys, Women for Trump, Back the Blue, loudspeakers blasting foul language into the neighborhood, Proud Boys running through the park hunting for people to assault. It was on video with them saying they're hunting for people. A lady, Joan Stembridge, a long-term person in our neighborhood who had a gun pointed at her, aimed at her. The tailgate parties where they're all backed in to the park, and they, they had cases of beer. It was a free-flowing, huge alcohol event. Heavy alcohol drinking with, while they're patrolling the parking lot with their weapons, bats, guns, pistols, bear mace, walking through the neighborhood, blocking streets, blocking traffic when they went up to the mayor's house or to the governor's house that day. Police drove by, they drove through the park. There was no intervention, even though no alcohol's allowed. Many people had slurred speech, were visibly drunk, and then they drove off in their big vehicles with other flags on it. Any, anyone's family member could have been hit or killed by any of those drunk drivers. I was parked right there, and I watched them, I saw them firsthand. So when they've gone to the governor's mansion, they blocked the streets, they blocked Commercial Liberty, High Street. Businesses had to shut down, lock their doors, they're intimidated. The gal who owns the Conde de Roi, they had to lock their doors while three armed men stood at the door making faces at them through the window. And somebody, I think I have five minutes with the Scan Chair, do I not?
Oh, boy. I'm not sure.
So anyways, businesses are affected, children are present, children hear all that language, they're children, but children in our neighborhoods too. So even in front of the state capitol, they have their license plates off, they sit there and drink alcohol right at the front steps of the state capitol. Now, and they've invited the homeless to come to this event again on the first and provide the homeless food and meals and toy drive. And it will be another intimidating deal. They march down the street and close off Commercial and Liberty and High Street. We should not have them parading through the neighborhood over and over, closing off our streets and intimidating businesses and neighbors. They want to stay in one area, stay in one area, but don't constantly close off the streets in the neighborhoods. They don't have permits to close off the streets. That's it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counselor Hoy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lori, I, as a neighborhood leader, I would just like to encourage you, if you have somebody to, to encourage your neighbors, if somebody has a firearm pointed at them, the appropriate response is to get out of there and call 911. It's not to come and send to City Council an email. You can do that after the fact, but you need to be calling 911. Or if you see a drunk driver, you need to call either 911 or the non-emergency police number as appropriate to report that behavior right then.
I did. Actually, I did that. I was told that the Salem police were on top of it. The Salem police were driving through the back part of the park on the south end.
Hear me. I'm telling you, call 911. I don't care what you're being told, like, call. Every person who has, has a firearm pointed at them needs to call 911 every time, period. Don't worry about what you heard from.
Yes, I can't speak for that, but that she didn't call, but I can speak for the police should have been seeing the same things I was seeing with the, with the party going on.
I hear you.
If, if I could sit there and see it, I would assume they could see it too, because there were plenty of them and plenty of vehicles driving through there.
But Lori, sometimes in order to investigate a crime, you need a stated victim. That's why you call and you make the report, please.
It, it's been a real problem, is people have really sort of shocking stories, but there's very few of these actually are registered with the police where we have a complaint. So I hope, I hope you'll kind of get back to folks with, you know, filing those complaints and making that 911 contact is really important to both document the behaviors that have you really disturbed and to make sure that the case you're making anecdotally is being driven by some additional fact situations, because the police will ask you questions, kind of zero in on time, place, all that kind of stuff. So it's just, Counselor Hoy is giving you just awfully good advice, and anyone who's listening, awfully good advice to get into this, to really get this thing moving along.
Well, right. And the police, I do think they're walking a fine line with these guys. I mean, these guys want to fight. They want to fight. It's pretty obvious. But at the same time.
Yeah, they're, we're not having the fights with the police. I mean, that's part of the, you, you need to, I, I really think, listen to what Counselor Hoy, he, he is the member of the council that knows probably.
Oh, sure.
As much about this as anybody does. Please listen to his really good advice.
Well, I can't account for somebody else not calling 911.
I know, I know.
But if I personally call and I'm told they're on top of it, I assume that they're there and they're seeing what I'm seeing.
Share your complaint. Counselor Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For me, the, one thing that may be missing in this conversation, and we've been hearing it now for weeks, is that there seems to be, in the minds of some, only one group that is causing all the trouble, but yet that is absolutely not true. Going down the list of things that have been talked about, marching without a permit, the Proud Boys are not the only ones that have marched without a permit, shouting obscenities, including the notorious F-word. You know, I encourage you to walk with me on the Union Street Bridge as kids in their bicycles walk by with their music, and if you took that F-letter word out of the music, it would be an instrumental. Armed with weapons, you know, again, on those, on that Union Street Bridge, I see people every day with the machetes in their backpack, baseball bats. They're not there for peace, they're there for weapons. And the, and the, the one that I guess the most is the ruining of our parks, especially mentioning Bush, Bush Park. Walk through Cascade Gateway Park or Wallace Marine Park and look at the destruction, true destruction, has been done to our parks. It's not just one-sided, it's from both sides. We're having it from the left, we're having the negative from the right, and we're having it from social media, which is a shame.
All right. Well, if there's no further discussion, we're adjourned.
Touch base.
You too. We'll miss you.
We'll touch base and have some fun.
Aye.